I am Diane Barber and I am running for the Groton Town Council. I have been a resident of Groton since 1989. I have served on the Town Council and I understand the commitment needed. I am running again because I love my community. I am embarrassed on the way the Town Council has been run in recent years. To the endless executive sessions, to the infighting, it must stop. It is beyond time to have a council that works for the citizens of Groton and listens to what the residents would like rather than conduct business behind closed doors. I am committed to bringing back more citizens petitions, listening to the neighbors that give Groton character, and to make sure the citizens of Groton have representation they can count on. The budget process in the spring is one of the most important parts of a councillor's job. Rubber stamping the budget without questioning the department heads is inexcusable. This can never happen again. It is important to maintain our quality of life, the character of our community, while keeping it affordable for our residents. I am a strong leader that is approachable and respectful. I will listen to all opinions to understand what is best for our community. I would sincerely appreciate your vote on or before November 4th. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren Gothier and I am a Groton Independent running for Town Council. I work as a contract professional at Electric Boat and I currently serve as an alternate on the Groton Town Planning and Zoning Commission. I also serve on the State Contracting Standards Board, where I champion clean contracting and accountable state procurement. Formerly, I have served on the Groton RTM for District 4, where I was Chair of the Community Development and Services Committee, as well as serving on the Property Reuse Committee. I graduated from UConn Avery Point with a Bachelor's in Maritime Studies and have earned my Master's of Public Administration from the UConn Department of Public Policy. I have two children in Groton schools. I'm running for Town Council because I would like to see Groton be put back on a responsible, future-focused path to sustainable growth. As a Groton Independent, ensuring that resources are used wisely, assets are protected, and citizen engagement is prioritized, those will be the guiding principles should I be elected to serve our community. The Groton Independence League is dedicated to returning Groton back to the business of good governing. The current Town Council, under one-party rule of the Democrats, has obstructed transparency, sidelined citizen concerns, and weaponized appointments against outspoken town volunteers, all while having embarrassed Groton with allegations of quid pro quo, harassment, and ethics violations. Groton deserves better leadership. Each of the Groton Independents on this slate are committed to being true cooperative leaders. We are a nonpartisan group that understands it takes everybody to build up a community. The Groton Independents have a platform that is both bold and achievable. We want to secure community-centered and community advocated policies, such as a master development plan to make proactive choices about what gets built in town and where, an improved property redevelopment policy to ensure that the community has a say in how public properties are utilized. We believe the answers for the big questions Groton faces, such as affordability, housing availability, redevelopment of public spaces, and business growth can only be found through robust community engagement. To promote accountable and transparent government, the Groton Independents will institute public comment at every meeting, ensure there are public hearings on developments prior to selecting developers, and we will protect democratic dialogue by removing procedural rules that limit the speech of councillors and by conducting business in a way that promotes discussion, collaboration, and informed decision-making. Further, a stronger ethics policy will ensure that the town business is conducted with the utmost integrity and that developers can trust that Groton is a safe investment. The cost of living has become burdensome for many of our residents. Town leaders need to be able to balance the trifecta of services, taxes, and density in order to make Groton a thriving community that's affordable. However, during the last eight years of one-party rule, the town budget has increased by over $30 million, even while the grant list has stagnated. And this year, the council refused to review the full budget before passing an 8% tax increase. With town operations budget having increased over 25% these past several years, the Groton Independents would pursue performance audits of the town operations to make sure residents are getting what we're paying for. And further, we'd engage in long-term budget planning to reduce tax hikes on residents and better strategize for Groton's growth, revising the policy on unreserved fund balance to ensure citizens are not being overtaxed and funds are being deployed to lower our debt obligations. Our plan must be comprehensive in order to realize the opportunities in front of us. This election presents Groton residents with the opportunity to elect candidates like myself and the Groton Independents who understand the need for responsible development and preservation of community character and who have a proven track record to back it up. I'm asking that you vote for candidates who have the knowledge, experience, and integrity to serve Groton in this critical moment because Groton deserves better. I'm Lauren Gothier and I'm asking for your vote this Tuesday, November 4th. Together with the Groton Independents, we can set Groton on a path that is future-focused, community-centered, fiscally responsible, and ready to lead. Please, vote Row C this election. Thank you.
Hello, Groton friends and neighbors. My name is Kevin Fitzjate and I'm running to join the Groton Town Council. I was born in Groton, grew up along the Thames River in Monville, was raised attending programs at the Groton Library and with Parks and Recreation, and moved to Groton after attending UConn to start my professional life. Through my work as a municipal official, I've experienced as a planning, economic development, and grant-writing professional with several Connecticut communities. I also hold a Master's Degree in Public Administration from UConn, where I focus on public finance and city planning. Additionally, I'm a Certified Connecticut Municipal Official through the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. As a member of the Town Council, I hope to serve as a professional, positive, and progressive representative for our community. One of my top priorities is to grow our grant list, to keep pace with our growing expenses, and to offer improved services for our residents. Groton has experienced significant growth in recent years as we attracted people to live and work in our community. As a member of the Town Council, I hope to invite new investment along our major corridors and in our downtown by making smart investments in our infrastructure, schools, and parks. I'm also concerned with the rising cost of living in our community. Too many of our residents are trapped with rising rents and are boxed out of homeownership. The issue of housing affordability is one that I've spent years advocating for and advancing new ideas to address. As a member of the Town Council, I intend to serve as a leader on this issue. I also plan to empower our businesses, nonprofits, and neighboring towns to pursue shared services. As a member of the Town Council, I intend to bring our regional partners to the table to revitalize our public transportation system, collaborate on infrastructure improvements, and rejuvenate the services that we offer our residents. As residents, we navigate across town lines on a daily basis to get to work, go to the grocery store, and engage our community. For too long, our approach to local government has boxed ourselves away on a town-by-town basis to the disservice of our residents and taxpayers. Pursuing shared services can lower costs for each of our towns by scaling our services and offers a solution to many of the quality-of-life problems that individual communities are working independently to address. Finally, I'm ready to provide a new voice to the Town Council's discussions. I'm excited at the opportunity to bring new ideas, a fresh perspective, and an attitude that we, as residents, can work across party lines, generations, and neighborhoods in the interest of improving our community. I'm running to be a professional, positive, and progressive member of the Town Council, and I'm running to bring new ideas to the council's discussions that can improve the quality of life for our residents, revitalize our services, and preserve our town's strong financial position. I hope I can count on your vote on Tuesday, November 4th.
Hello, and I am Bruce Jones and I'm running for reelection to the Groton Town Council this November 4th. It's been an honor to serve our community over the past four years. I currently serve as a Town Counselor, Liaison to the Trails Coordinating Task Force, a Board Member at SEC TV, and part of the Sustainability Crew at the Groton Open Space Association. I'm also a volunteer with United Way Food Bank. I am married, a father of two daughters, and now a very proud grandfather of four grandchildren. Groton is my home and I care deeply about the people who make it such a special place. Over the past term, I've been proud to help move many important projects forward. The solar farm at the landfill has begun. Several vacant school properties are now moving through the reuse process. The Sutton Park renovations are underway and our new pickleball courts at Thrive 55 are open and always busy. Thanks to all the amazing volunteers who made that happen. Our athletic field plan is progressing and we're working to strengthen veteran services. Plus, we've added more solar trash compactors to help keep our town clean. Groton works best when everyone takes part and contributes. As a Town Counselor, I'm proud that we've kept taxes stable, balanced development with open space, and continue to support recreation with our seniors. If reelected, I'll keep working hard for you and building on what we've accomplished and planning for a strong, sustainable future. I'm Bruce Jones and I would be honored to continue serving on your Groton Town Council and I hope to have your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you. My name is Kathy Chase and I am running for the Town Council. I began serving our community in 2016 after being appointed to the Charter Revision Commission. Following that, I was elected to the Representative Town Meeting, our RTM, in 2017 and served until 2023 representing District 1. While on the RTM, I served on the Finance Committee, the Education Committee, and the Parks and Recreation Committee. I was also the liaison for the RTM on a committee that included the Town Council, the City Council, and the Board of Education. I am currently a member of the Ethics Commission. I am proud to be running for Town Council in hopes of serving all the residents of Groton. As both a mother and grandmother, I'm familiar with how quickly things can grow and change. Groton is no exception. Change is inevitable and it is important. But we must ensure that Groton's growth does not change the things which make Groton our home. Therefore, it must be responsible growth. If elected, I will work toward economic development that will create tax revenue while remaining environmentally conscious. I will also work to make the Town Council cohesive and respectful, regardless of political affiliation or differing opinions. I can do this by setting a good example for decorum. We must understand that having a dialogue is a necessary condition for town business. There is always going to be a back and forth. It's called constructive conversation. However, it must be respectful. As of now, the rules and protocols for meetings are riddled with artificial time constraints, making it nearly impossible for a conversation to be had, let alone be constructive. I will strive to make this change to be a more efficient discussion of town business. And lastly, there are a few things I would like to share with the people of Groton. I'd like you to remember that my name is Kathy Chase and I'm running for the Town Council. I'd like you to know that after 60-plus years of living in Groton, I'm the right person for the job because I know that the job is to represent all of Groton, not myself nor my party. When I speak on a topic, I've done my research. All I want is what is best for Groton and to keep volunteering my time to help shape its future. I'd like you to know that I will not talk just to hear myself speak, that I have no political agenda, and I hope to earn your vote on Election Day. Once again, my name is Kathy Chase. Vote for me on November 4th on Row 3B. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bill Ferguson and I'm running for Town Council as part of the Groton Independence Party. I won't take up much of your time today, but I want to share why I'm stepping forward and why this election matters for all of us. After living in Groton for more than half my life, I care deeply about what's happening in our town. I've been involved in our community in many ways, whether it was helping with the Mystic Outdoor Art Festival, Flozuela, or serving as President Downtown Mystic Merchants. I'm currently Chair of the Historic District Commission and Chair of our Groton Independence Party. And I'm very proud to say that I was named Tourism Leader of the Year for Southeastern Connecticut in 2019. But that's the past. Today, I want to talk about our future. For the past eight years, our Town Council has been controlled by a single party. And while they may have had good intentions, one-party rule has led to real problems: higher taxes, stalled services, and questionable decisions about development, the Oral School debacle being just one example. Groton's a diverse community. We're young families, working-class individuals, military members, seniors. We deserve a Town Council that reflects all of us. And it's time to bring new voices to the table. Right now, our town is facing three major challenges. One, affordability. This past year, the Town Council didn't seriously scrutinize the budget. There were no efforts to make fiscally responsible cuts, and as a result, taxes went up. That's unacceptable. Two, irresponsible development. People are nervous about what's happening in their neighborhoods. Developers with questionable backgrounds are being brought in. Massive apartment complexes are being placed in quiet residential areas. That's not thoughtful planning. That's disruption. Three, lack of business support. Did you know that 80% of the people who work in Groton don't live here? That's a missed opportunity. We need to build a local economy that encourages people to live, work, and spend right here. Car washes don't create community. We need businesses that do. Groton's an amazing town. What makes it special? Our neighborhoods, our people, our sense of community, people like you. We need leadership that will protect these things, not threaten them. I'm running because I want to be your voice on the Town Council. I will fight to protect our neighborhoods, support local businesses, and keep Groton affordable for all, young or old, working or retired. On November 4th, vote Bill Ferguson for Town Council. A vote for me is a vote to keep Groton strong and affordable, put neighborhoods and people first, support businesses that create opportunity, and protect the quality of life we all value. I look forward to seeing you around town. And I'm Bill Ferguson and I'm ready to lead Groton into a better future.
Hey, Groton. As many of you know, my name is Ada Pacino and I've been one of your Town Councils for the past two years. What many of you don't know is that I'm a husband to my beautiful bride of nearly 40 years, father to three adult children, and non-ado to four grandchildren. I'm a veteran of the US Navy Seabees, the Connecticut Army National Guard, and the US Coast Guard, totaling 25 years of service. In my military career, I served under six US Presidents and three Connecticut Governors. I participated in landing zone and rapid runway repair exercises on the island of Tinian in the Northern Marianas Islands. I participated in maintaining mission readiness on the US territory of Guam in the Western Pacific. On the other side of the planet, during Operation Restore Hope, I drilled a well and fed war-bad Somali people in the African desert outside Oduro Somalia. During Operation Iraqi Freedom, while aboard the Coast Guard Cutter Dallas, I served with the George Washington Battle Group off the coast of Cyprus, Syria, and Lebanon in the Mediterranean Sea. I've actually jumped off two perfectly good ships in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean. And yes, both of them was on purpose. And one of them was the Coast Guard Cutter Eagle. I've received roughly two dozen medals and ribbons. Among them, five, I didn't get caught medals, although some would call them good conduct. After military retirement, I continued service to country with another eight and a half years when my application was accepted to become, at the time, the only brick, stone, and concrete mason on the US subbase. I formed, poured, and finished hundreds of cubic yards of concrete. Six of those years, I also had the honor of serving my coworkers as the Chief Union Steward with the Metal Trades Council, where I read, voted on, modified, and ultimately ratified multiple union contracts. When I ran for Town Council two years ago, I honestly didn't know how I was going to conduct myself in this new elected public service aspect of my life. So I adopted the Common Man Theory and looked at the town's budget with these questions: what would most people of median means do if this was their personal budget? And with every item on the agenda, how will my next vote help my constituents, the people who put their trust in me to represent them and their needs? Using those two processes and a heaping helping of common sense, I think I've served the town and the city residents of Groton extremely well. As a member of the Pleasant Valley School Reuse Committee, I helped successfully vet and choose a developer and the town is now currently working with said developer. My goals for this next term will be: one, getting the Groton Heights School under development. It has sat idle and deteriorating long enough and the neighborhood deserves better. Two, after hearing what the S.B. Butler neighborhood desires for the S.B. Butler property, it is clear to me what they actually want is to keep S.B. Butler's zoned RS12. Although that is primarily planning and zoning issue, if it ever finds itself on the Town Council's agenda, I will wholeheartedly respect the neighborhood's wishes and vote accordingly. Three, the continuation of the athletic fields funding and subsequent funding referendum. It has been a long time coming for the Groton Athletic Fields. I'd like to thank the Groton Athletic Fields Committee for their years of effort and diligence. They've done an outstanding job in their research and their recommendations. Four, I intend to keep Groton's mill rate as low as possible while still providing the much-needed services Groton residents deserve. If you haven't noticed, I've dedicated nearly 40 years of my life to service to my country, my countrymen, our uniformed warfighters, and our town. I would like to continue with your blessing. So on November 4th, I'm asking you for your vote and I promise to serve Groton with drama-free, common sense, honesty, integrity, and actual transparency that you and Groton deserve from your elected official. Thank you in advance for your support.
Hello, fellow Groton residents and neighbors. My name is John Goodrich. I'm 51 years old and I am proud to call Groton my home. My family has lived in Connecticut with ties to the Groton area since the mid-1600s. That kind of history isn't just trivia to me. It's a reminder that every generation has a responsibility to care for this place, to protect what makes it special, and to leave it better for the next. I grew up believing that community isn't defined by government. It's defined by the people who live in it. But government should reflect the priorities, the values, and the voices of the people. And right now, too many residents feel ignored, dismissed, or shut out. That needs to change. Today, I serve as an alternate on the Town of Groton Historic District Commission. And before that, I served on the Property Reuse Commission. I didn't step into those roles for a title. I stepped up because I believe in public service and I believe that anyone who serves the public should do it with one guiding principle: people come first. Not politics, not personalities, and certainly not personal agendas. Over the past few years, I've heard the same concerns from residents again and again. People feel that decisions are being made for them, not with them. They feel that the town leadership has stopped listening. They see boards being stacked, meetings being rushed, comments being limited, and questions going unanswered. That's not how local government should operate, not anywhere, especially not here. If I'm elected to the Town Council, my priority is simple: to restore a town government that truly listens to its residents, that puts their needs first and respects every voice, whether that voice agrees with the majority or not. I will work with my fellow councillors to make sure that Town Hall belongs to the people again. Here's what that looks like in action. First, restoring unlimited public comment. No resident should be told their time is up when the issue affects their family, their neighborhood, their taxes, or their future. Public comment isn't a formality. It is the foundation of representative leadership. When you silence residents, you shut down trust. When you listen, you build partnerships. Second, allowing every councillor to place items on the agenda. This may sound procedural, but it is the fundamental to fairness. When only a few have control over what can be discussed, you don't have open government. You have gatekeeping. Every councillor is elected by the people and every councillor should have the ability to bring forward the ideas and concerns of the residents they represent. Third, guarantee fair and equal time for all sides of every issue. Good decisions come from open conversation. When you hear different perspectives, you find better solutions. Better solutions build a better Groton. Shutting down one side doesn't make the other side right. It just creates resentment, confusion, and division. Finally, requiring that all board and commission appointments are based on qualifications. Appointments should never be about favoritism, friendships, grudges, or political games. These roles matter. They shape zoning, they shape development, they shape education, housing, public safety, and preservation. We need the most qualified, most dedicated people serving, not just those that are well-connected or agreeable. Groton deserves the best qualified people at the table. But beyond fixing the process, we need a vision, one grounded in responsibility, opportunity, and respect. Our town should be a place where families can afford to live and stay, where businesses want to open and grow, where seniors aren't priced out, where young people see a future, and where every resident, no matter their background or beliefs, knows their voice counts and is heard. That's what I mean when I say, "Let's get back to basics." Government should solve problems, not create them. It should inform, not hide. Government should unite, not divide. It should listen first and speak second. And that's why, when you vote on November 4th, I'm asking you to vote Row C. As we say, it's as easy as ABC because we're here to make Groton affordable, business-friendly, citizen-centered. Those aren't just talking points. They're a commitment to changing how decisions are made and who they're made for. Groton deserves leadership that listens, leadership that respects the people it serves, leadership that works hard, tells the truth, and gets back to basics. If you choose to elect me, I'm ready to serve and I'm ready to work for you and with you. Thank you.
Hello, Groton friends, neighbors, constituents. My name is Portia Bordelon. I'm proud to be running for reelection to the Groton Town Council. I'm a lifelong Groton resident, a graduate of Fitch High School, and the mother of two sons. My oldest son, Isaac, serves as a submariner in the US Navy stationed right here in Groton. My younger son, Aiden, is a midshipman at Maine Maritime Academy studying power systems engineering technology on a NROTC scholarship for the Navy. It has been my honor to serve our community as an elected official for nearly eight years. During my time on the council, I've served on the Public Safety Committee, Long-Term Recovery Committee, and the various task forces, including those focused on short-term rentals, the Groton Long Point Bridge, and athletic fields. I'm particularly proud of my referral I made that led to the formation of the Property Reuse Committee. Together, we drafted the 2023 Town-Owned Property Evaluation Procedure, a transparent, accountable, and community-driven approach to managing public land. Though it hasn't yet been adopted, I hope the next council will revisit- Though it hasn't yet been adopted, I hope the next council will revisit and implement it, and I hope this can be installed as the guiding document in time to become the procedure by which the future of the SB Butler property is determined. Historically, I've been a vocal advocate on some of Groton's most pressing issues, calling for early action on the Mystic Oral School situation, opposing the failed data center proposal, and standing with the Branford Manor residents during their health and housing crisis. Likewise, I support the community around SB Butler in their efforts to organize and advocate on their own behalf. Throughout my service, I've consistently advocated for equitable, enriching education, environmentally responsible, community-rooted economic development, support for seniors, youth, and military families, and fair representation across every neighborhood in Groton. This term, I championed inclusive, community-based approaches for allocating opioid settlement and cannabis revenues. I pushed for using nip bottle redemption funds to install solar-powered trash and recycling compactors, and for equitable processes in appointing residents to town committees. I've also raised concerns about restrictive procedural rules that limit discussion, reduce transparency, and sideline elected councillors. One reform I'll push for is to guarantee all elected members the opportunity to serve on at least one of the three standing committees. The Board of Education already follows this model, so should we. Looking ahead, I remain committed to restoring public comment to five minutes per speaker with no overall cap, and ensuring public input is welcomed at both regular and committee of the whole meetings. I believe limiting public comment was not only improper, it is a disservice to our residents and a failure of the democratic responsibility. As a councillor, I strive to be present, proactive, passionate, and persistent. I believe our role is to be honest brokers of information, to facilitate civil discourse, and to stay engaged with the community we serve. Representing Groton's diverse and dynamic community has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I hope to have earned your trust and your vote to continue this important work. Election Day is Tuesday, November 4th. You'll find my name on the ballot in Position 6A. A vote for Portia is a vote for progress. Thank you for your time, your engagement, and your support.
My name is Patricia Weaver. As a homeowner in Groton for twenty-eight years, I've been a resident and my children have attended the Groton school system. I was elected to the RTM to represent District 3 during the 2021 municipal election. I love Groton and wouldn't want to live anywhere else. My desire for both our city and town is to have a political environment derived from integrity, transparency, accountability, and affordability for our residents and taxpayers. We have no term limits for various elected positions. I believe that Groton needs a fresh perspective that benefits each resident, whether they participate in the election or not. Collectively, we are all neighbors grappling with everyday finances and personal issues, trying our best to balance daily life. Any elected official should encourage and not inhibit public input and participation in decisions made by our local government. We live in a community that has both a city and town government and dual budgets that are intended to improve and benefit everyone as a whole. There needs to be less division and more inclusion. Our town and city governments need to find a way to work together in unison, making better fiscal-financial decisions on community, development, and process improvements. Other areas which need to be addressed in Groton are as follows: increasing school budget, increasing homeowners' taxes and mill rate, the utility cost, the housing shortage, and there is a need for more economic revitalization, transportation and connectivity, climate resilience, and a need to strengthen infrastructure. To ensure transparency when deciding on building reuse, it is necessary to conduct comprehensive public outreach and engage stakeholders, provide detailed public access to all relevant documentation and decision-making processes, and establish clear communication channels to inform the community throughout the evaluation and selection phases, including publishing site assessments, project proposals, and criteria for selecting the best reuse option, along with mechanisms for public feedback and input. Deciding how to allocate land use between residential, affordable housing, green space, or commercial development requires a comprehensive approach that balances community needs, economic growth, and environmental sustainability. We need to prioritize and develop a long-term strategic vision plan aligning with community values and guide zoning and land use decisions. The priority of the plan should be identifying smart growth, mixing land uses, compact building design, walkable neighborhoods, and preservation of open space for both equitable development and sustainable development. In our region, we have many not-for-profit organizations that provide services to the populations impacted by unemployment, homelessness, addiction, and domestic violence, yet they are under-resourced and function primarily on donations. Due to the increasingly changing world economic and political structure, there is not one individual that is not being financially impacted. More and more people are in need of housing and food assistance and programs which are being cut and no longer funded. The percentage of people impacted by poverty in the city is 19.45%, and in Groton, New London County is listed as 8.41%. The increasing real estate taxes can disproportionately burden seniors in Groton, many of whom are struggling to keep up with rising costs. While we can't turn a blind eye to this ever-increasing and growing population across the world, we can in both Groton City and Groton Town work harder and smarter to make fiscal decisions. As a Town Council Independent Party candidate, if elected, I would provide a new voice and fresh perspective, putting public back into our public forums. Both the City of Groton and the Town of Groton mayors are stepping down after serving our community. During this election, we have a rare opportunity to welcome change. Maybe you don't think your vote will matter, but in this election, more than any other election, it will. Please take a moment and get informed about the selection of candidates who are on the ballots. You have options. I would encourage you to vote Groton Independence for Town Council, as simple as ABC, as we want to make Groton affordable, business-friendly, community-centered. Other endorsed candidates are Vanessa Drabek, Bill Ferguson, Lauren Gothier, and John Goodrich. Of the 11,600 registered voters, only 14% voted in the last election. I would encourage you to vote early, and if you need an absentee ballot, to contact your town clerk for one to be mailed. Please vote Row C on November 4th, 2025, because Groton deserves better leadership. Lastly, as a resident of Groton, I personally endorse Gwen Depoy for City Mayor and Portia Bordelon for Town Council. They are both residents that care and are compassionate about Groton. Thank you for your time and consideration. Make your voice count and your choice count on Election Day. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Juliet Parker, a lifelong Groton resident who grew up in Paquannic Bridge as the oldest of six children and a proud graduate of Fitch High School, class of '91. Go Fitch! I raised my two daughters here in the city of Groton, both college graduates and working I hold a bachelor's degree in legal studies and have proudly served as the executive assistant to the City of Groton's Police Chief for eighteen years. I am also a Connecticut Certified Municipal Officer and a Connecticut Post Assessor. Community involvement has always been at the heart of who I am. Over the years, I have volunteered with parent-teacher organizations in our schools, served as a Girl Scout co-leader, supported my church, volunteered at Groton Public Library, and currently volunteer with United Way Mobile Food Pantry and other local organizations. I'm running for reelection to the Groton Town Council, where I have served since 2017, after four years on the RTM representing District 2. On the council, I serve as liaison to TVCCA and the Board of Education Town Council, City Council, and RTM Committee. My work with TVCCA has deepened my understanding of housing and food insecurity, challenges that continue to affect many in New London County. My commitment remains simple: to serve my community with integrity, compassion, and accountability. I want to continue being part of the solution and a role model for others, showing that when we come together, we build a stronger, more connected Groton for everyone. Remember to go out and vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Hello, fellow Groton residents. My name is David McBride, and I'm a current town councillor, seeking reelection to the Groton Town Council. I would greatly appreciate if you would consider voting for me in the upcoming election. Early voting begins October 20th and continues for almost two weeks up to Election Day on Tuesday, November 4th. A little bit about me: I'm fifty-six years old. I grew up in eastern Connecticut. I went to college at Seton Hall University, and then I earned my MBA in finance at the University of Connecticut. I lived in Groton full-time for over twenty-five years. I'm married, and we have five children, all of whom are young adults except for the youngest, who attends Fitch High School and plays on the football team. A little shout-out, let's go Falcons, we've got a big game this weekend, I'll be there cheering the brutes on. I believe I bring a lot of experience in leadership and finance to my job as a town councillor. I'm in my fourth year now as a councillor, and before that, I served at different times as President, Treasurer, and Director of Public Works for Groton Long Point. I have been the Finance Director for the City of New London for the past eight years, and prior to that, I was the Finance Director for the Mohegan Tribe for twenty years. All of these municipal positions prepared me very well for the role of a councillor. I'm also involved in other areas throughout southeastern Connecticut. I'm an adjunct business professor at Mitchell College. I'm the founder and current Vice President of a nonprofit that provides scholarships to students in eastern Connecticut in memory of my best friend who perished in New York City on 9/11. I'm also involved in a family business that owns some real estate and some franchises in the area, and I proudly serve on the Board of Directors for St. Bernard School, where I graduated just a few years ago. My experiences will translate into actions if I'm fortunate enough to be reelected. I have a few key initiatives and objectives I will be focused on if elected. They are as follows. Number one, continue to ensure the school properties that have been sitting unused for many years are reviewed for their proper use and for the betterment of the town. The decision on their best use should be determined by a well-thought-out review process that includes substantial community involvement and feedback. As a councillor and as the Chair of the Property Reuse Committee, which developed a detailed plan to accomplish this, I will help ensure that a fair and transparent process is followed. Two such properties are already moving forward, and two others will be reviewed over the next few years. Number two, Groton has an abundance of ball fields throughout the town, and that's a beautiful thing. However, I'm not sure they are being utilized as effectively as possible. I'd like the council to establish a joint use committee comprised of school departments and the Recreation Department members to develop a process whereby all of the fields around town, and that includes the state-owned fields at Grosso Tech, which Groton residents pay taxes towards, are shared fairly and equitably for all town residents. Number three, I'd like the council to consider establishing a town or regional stormwater authority. A few other communities in Connecticut have already done this, and it's proved to be extremely beneficial. The idea is to raise revenue streams fairly inequitably from everyone throughout the town, including tax-exempt entities such as the subbase, the airport, and the hospital. This will provide the necessary funding to implement the town's numerous coastal resiliency plans without having to raise taxes on residents. Number four, downtown Mystic parking needs to be addressed. If reelected, I would support the council establishing a committee similar to the Property Reuse Committee I chaired, which will be comprised of numerous individuals from the community who would meet on a regular basis and develop a plan with numerous options on how best to solve the situation, to provide a recommendation to the council. Number five, I believe when making financial decisions, the council needs to have a long-term, ten-year financial plan. I would like the council to direct staff to develop this long-term financial plan for the council to review on a regular basis. When making financial decisions, such as approving the budget, considering large capital purchases, issuing bonds, or considering tax-exempt programs, it will be beneficial to see how such decisions will impact the town's financials, as well as the future mill rates and taxes. Groton residents, I am a team player who works well with all the councillors, listens to all the residents, and acts in a professional and courteous manner. I would greatly appreciate your support in this election, and if I am fortunate enough to be reelected, I will continue to propel Groton forward and ensure the best long-term decisions are being made for all of the Groton residents and the town of Groton. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Let's go, Groton!